With that as an introduction, we're gonna go ahead and get started. And I want to welcome Erica Sugarman to the editorial board to talk about her run for council. And this is a part of a series of interviews we're doing with council candidates. We'll be talking to your opponent as well and other folks throughout the rest of the speaking a little bit next week. First question is, why are you in this race? And then what do you hope to accomplish if you're elected?
For the past 20 years, I've been waiting for real choices. And we really haven't had any choices. For the first time in a long time, we have choices, not only in my race, but all of the races. And the people want choices. They want people on the city council who are accountable, who are transparent, and who will offer equity. And that has not been happening. If you look at different districts, some districts are very underserved and others are served correctly. There needs to be transparency, accountability, someone on the city council that will make a difference. I have instilled in my students that if there's an issue or problem, then focus on the problem and find some solutions. Therefore, I've decided to run for city council, along with a lot of my former students who are also on the journey with me.
So let's delve into a couple of quick questions. But first, I want to look at your background a little bit. So you mentioned some of the students that are on the journey with you. You are, I think it's an instructional teacher at White Station?
That is correct.
And how has that experience helped you or informed your experience to run for office? What have you done in your current job that's prepared you for the one you're seeking to have in addition to your current job?
Okay, that is a very good question. As an educator, the past 21 years, I've taught over 5,000 students in various sectors, including US government. With US government, we look at various issues and cases and things of that nature. I've taught my students how to write bills. I have taught my students to advocate for themselves. Having said that... (sigh) Excuse me, what's the question again?
The question is, how has your experience as an instructional teacher helped inform you and shaped you to run for this office? How has it helped you as a...
So, thank you for...
Sure.
Yes. Okay, so as an educator, when policies are passed at the city and state level, I see the impact directly on my students and their families. For example, several years ago, when the firefighters and police officers lost their benefits, a lot of my students had to go to work and help support their families. Some students left this system, and they moved to various places like Austin, Texas, etc. And they're upset because it's changed for them, and they didn't, you know, they're upset about that. Also, for example, when the bus routes were cut, my students were saying, "Ms. Sugarman, they're saying these bus routes are empty," but they're not. They're full when I travel to my job. And I said, "What's going on?" He said, "They're cutting my routes. I've just lost my job." So I see firsthand how these, when elected officials make policies, how they impact my students and their families. And so as a result, I try to help my students advocate for different issues. Another example, when this particular mayor decided that he was going to close some of the libraries and he was going to save money by shorting the hours at community centers. I asked my students, "Well, what can we do about this?" This was during the summer. And so they were like, "Well, what can we do?" So they started petition. My daughter was the one that voted up, and she got her friends involved, and they went from community center to community center. So when policies change, I see how it impacts not only my students' families, but communities. And so my job as an educator, I've seen it firsthand through the classroom.
So let's delve into a poor community issue. And I think it's been a consistent thing with every candidate we've talked to. There are all kinds of candidates that crime and public safety are at the top of the list of concerns and issues in their districts or in the city as a whole.
Yes.
And for you, how would you deal with the issue of violent crime? Memphis has long had this issue. It's ebb and flow, some in terms of the murder rates. On track, this revealed 200 murders, which is below the 2016 record level, but still far too high for any city. How would you deal with violent crime in general and also the murder rate?
That's not going to be a panacea. For example, poverty has a lot to do with the crime rates. We have, especially in the African-American community, a lot of poverty. And they're stuck. They're stuck in poverty because of the lack of transportation. For example, over the summer, people wanted to work in my campaign, young people, but they couldn't get to me. Even recently, a woman is working on my polls, and so she was like, "I can't get to the poll, you know, but I want to make the money." And so I'm arranging to have someone pick her up, then drop her off, and that kind of thing. But there's so many people that are stuck in poverty, and that impacts the crime rate. Also, in the summertime, there is an increase in, for example, crime. And that's because young people, young adults, or young youth have too much time on their hands. They need something productive to do in the summer. Having said that, the police, even though the current mayor has hired a large number of police officers, the net gains only been like 25, from what I understand, looking at the data. So again, we need also to reach out to various communities. And for example, when I was growing up, there was an officer-friendly program. So all communities, Hispanic, people of color, they were engaged, they knew their police officers in the communities, they felt like they could speak to them. But now it's changed. People are afraid of police officers. My students tell me, you know, when they are stopped by the police, they panic, you know? And so in my classroom, what I do, we talk about, you know, their rights, how they should behave, both hands on the steering wheel, do not make any sudden moves. We go through all of this. And so there needs to be programs so that people are not afraid of the police officers. And secondly, that we need to work on poverty as far as helping people get jobs. And number three, we need something for our youth to do that's productive in the summertime. Now, this is not going to answer all the yields, but it's a start. One thing as city councilwoman that I will continue to do is go out to the communities and see what the issues are. A lot of the current city councilmen are not doing that. I've asked, because I've asked them, "Who are your city councilmen?" They don't even realize they have four city councilmen. So as I go into the communities, I warn them, I educate them, so that they can engage with the government.
On the follow-up on crime, with the candidates we've talked to, they kind of fall into two groups. One, we need more police officers. One, we have none, or we have too many. Where do you fall? Do you feel like we need more? Are we sat well? Do we have too many?
Well, the issue is the same with the firemen as well as the police officers, is that retention is a problem. We're having high criminal rates. So we need to retain the police officers who are trained. We also need to educate the communities that they're here to protect us, not to just arrest and harass us. So it's not necessary that we need more police officers, but we need to retain the ones that we're getting. That is also a cost issue. When you go into recruiting and training, and then they, once they achieve their experience, because of all the crime, they get great experience, unfortunately or fortunately, I don't know, look at it, then they go to other areas. That is a huge issue. Also, with small businesses, an issue is theft. I've reached out to business owners in my district, District 9, and especially in Cordova. They are so afraid that Cordovas could end up like Hickory Hill, and the crime rate is, you know, is spiking. So having said that, I'm going to, I've been doing this, reaching out to lawmakers at the state level. They have certain bills, for example, gun safety bill that they're looking at to try to have ratified. And it deals with guns being left unsecured in cars. And in Cordova, that is a huge issue, gun theft. And so it's going to take, again, the local government working with the state government, trying to resolve some of the issues as far as laws are concerned, but it's also going to take up a local level to ensure that people feel comfortable and people feel safe. And that includes business owners, because they're saying, you know, "I'm going to move to another neighborhood." And then you have this vacuum. You have all these blighted or vacant buildings, etc., because they're moving further out, out of the county even.
I just want to follow up on something you just mentioned, that some folks in Cordova worry about becoming the next Hickory Hill.
Correct.
How do we fix communities, that's the right word, like Hickory Hill? Because if people worry about a community becoming the next whatever that is, how do you fix that community? Because there's still some particular assets in Hickory Hill, retail, shopping, single homeowners, or single homes, I should say. How do you fix it?
Okay, I wish you talked about homeowners, because that is a huge issue, especially in the African-American community, because homeownership has decreased. We've become a city of renters. And so we need to help people who want to buy homes to allow the opportunity. But as far as the showing of Cordova so it doesn't end up like Hickory Hill, that's going to make sure... That's going to be a couple of things. Number one is that the businesses that are placed there are feel comfortable and safe, number one. Number two is they need incentives to stay there and to expand their businesses. The vacant buildings that are popping up in Cordova, we need to determine who the owners are, number one. And number two, try to either get them to fix up their properties, or to penalize if they're done, and to put those properties back on the market. That's where your entrepreneurs can come into play, because there are young people, or people in general, who want to own their own businesses. One thing, when I reached out to a particular community in Cordova, and they were saying that we need, you know, those mom and pop stores in our communities, we need to create sustainable communities again, you know? And that's the thing that I'm hearing. Every community is different. What works in one community will not work in another community. What they're doing in Midtown, for example, is they're repurposing some of the homes. That's working in that community. That may not work in Cordova, for example. So again, we have to look at the vacant, both houses as well as vacant commercial buildings, find out who the owners are, if they live out the state or in the country, hold them accountable. I've reached out to the county trustee, for example. She just said that that's the problem, is finding the owners, number one, and holding them accountable. And that's where we're going to have to work with the Judge Ethrich in trying to resolve these issues. Coding and zoning is going to be another thing that we're going to have to look at as a city council, because we can hold these communities accountable, and the ones that are starting up, if we change on the codes. For example, the Idaho district, they're going through a change now. There's, for example, a three-story apartment building being built in the Idaho district, and the residents have reached out to me. They're very upset, because this is going to kill the value of their homes. I said, "The only thing is there's lack of privacy, and the potential of the value of their home is going down, but there's parking, and crime, and things of that nature. This is a working-class community." And so I've reached out, well, they've reached out to me, and I've asked, "But what have y'all started to do?" And so I'm trying to help them to sustain their communities. But we've got to work with the communities, whether it's Cordova, whether it's Midtown, or Hickory Hill. And the key is going to be, make sure that the neighborhoods that are stable, or the business community that aren't stable, remains stable. And then the vacant properties, we need to make sure they do not stay vacant for long periods of time.
I have one last question, and throw it open to others on the panel. You had talked about this in a couple instances in your previous answers, but on poverty in Memphis, it's one of the highest in the nation, I think second only to New Orleans area, and the level of poverty among children is sky-high.
Forty percent.
Forty percent. What would you do to try and address generational poverty and to try and reverse those trends if you're elected to the city council? What things would you advocate for or push for?
Vocational training and literacy programs. However, if you look at Tennessee College of Technology, there is a year-and-a-half wait list to get into some of the programs. That's unacceptable. We need vocational training centers in every sector, where there's a high rate of poverty, like Hickory Hill area, like some areas in Midtown, like Raleigh, like Frasier. Because if you have a facility and people can't get to it, what's the point? So not only do we need to have additional vocational programs, we also need to have transportation. I have reached out to state representatives about increasing the class size of Southwest of some of these programs, like EMT programs, for example. And they had an EMT program at U of M in the 90s. So we need to bring those back. Tennessee College of Technology, they should not have a year-and-a-half wait list for any program. My son, for example, was waiting almost two years to get into the airplane mechanic class. That doesn't make any sense. So there are young people, or people in general, who want training, but it's not accessible, and they have problems with transportation again. Transportation is going to be the key to helping people with that poverty in Memphis. That means we need to sure up MATA, and also look at rail, like rails.
So if you're stuck a little more on transportation, is there a plan out there that you would endorse? Is, do we need to rethink planning for MATA? What is your take on how we make MATA a more viable option for more people?
It needs to, there needs to be more routes, number one, and also timely. And they're saying that, I'm hearing from the people who are taking the bus, it takes them one, two hours to get from one place to another. That's not acceptable. In fact, I've reached out to a CEO of Orange Plus, Jay Morrison. And so we sat down, had a conversation, and he said, "We have jobs, but we can't get the employees here to work." And so he started putting on scooters. And we both said, "This is not the answer." And so he said, "When you become city councilwoman, focus on transportation." I'm hearing that from the people who want the jobs, and also it's been hearing from the CEOs of corporations, transportation. Now, there have been some cases, I understand, where, when I spoke to individuals at MATA, I met their association. And they're saying that there's not enough routes, number one, and the routes that are needed aren't there. And they said, "The second thing is the buses are very old. There were opportunities that were missed on city council when they could have applied and received grants to get new buses." And so as a city councilwoman, I'm going to look at grants, what grants are out there and available that we can get, so that we can shore up MATA, increase the number of routes, make sure they come more timely, in shorter time periods.
Ms. Sugarman, you talk about upgrading MATA, alleviating light, promoting, building more vocational, adding more vocational school programs, hiring work police, adding community policing programs. Is there enough money in the city budget now to accommodate these solutions?
Yes, it's a matter of allocation prioritizing. For example, there's money that's been allocated to pilots, for example, tax abatements, and people are currently using as their private piggy banks. And so that is an issue. There is a place for pilots if used correctly, but there's no accountability or oversight or enforcement. That's a savings there. Because first of all, if you're going to give a corporation a tax abatement, they should still have to be taxed for infrastructure and education. Now, having said that, if we're giving tax abatement, they're going to bring jobs, I'm hearing that they're giving low-wage jobs. That's not acceptable. There's got to be jobs, not only their living wage jobs, okay, but also with benefits, not just living wage. So I will want to look at, as a city councilwoman, with my colleagues, to look at who's receiving the abatements. How is it benefiting Memphis and its impact? I would also look at enforcement, because if they're receiving abatements, are we getting what they promised? Okay, that's one thing, one way to say. Another, there's so much turnover as far as firemen and police officers. We're recruiting people from other states. We move them here, pay for them to move here. They get certifications, and then they leave. The police officers and firemen want their benefits restored, and I totally agree. I am an educator, and I know, I cannot help educators, because that's the county, but I know how it is to work as a civil servant, as a servant to the people, and have your benefits cut or changed. I know how it is. Most educators, police officers, have worked two to three jobs, including myself. So I know what it is to be part of the working lower-middle class, if you will. We're one step above the working poor, and we're struggling. And I promise labor, I will not make any changes that would burden them any further. I will not. But there's money, there's ways there, there are things that we can do, but it's a matter of prioritizing and reallocating.
If you, if you're on the council, and you look at the pilots, and you realize, you know, these guys are doing a great job with the pilots, you can't squeeze any more money out of the pilots to add to city services, then what do you do? I mean, you talk about a number of programs that you want to upgrade. If there isn't money available in the pilot program, how would the city afford this?
Well, first of all, the pilots need revamping itself, because there are people receiving pilots who should not be receiving pilots whatsoever. They're using pilots to support their pet projects, if you will. And that is unacceptable. So we need to put a moratorium on all pilots, and to look at each one on its own merits. And if they're doing a great job, fine. And if not, then, no. We're not going to have an electro-lapse on my watch where we're left all over the egg, you know? You make a promise, you keep a promise. And if you're not going to keep that promise, then you need to pay up. We also need to look at small businesses and see what they need as far as resources and start mentoring programs. One committee said that, for example, we need grocery stores in some areas that are food deserts. So I will, you know, I want to work with the chamber to see how we can work together in mentoring entrepreneurs for these different types of businesses. For example, I know of an individual, he started a business, and he was mentored by someone who'd been, you know, had started several businesses. And so she took this young man under her wing, and she mentored him. Now they're thriving. So we need more of those kinds of things, those kinds of programs. We need to have a council of small businessmen who can come together and say, "These are the things that we need." One thing that I've heard from people who work at the chamber, they've stated that we're losing membership. And I've talked to the members, and they said, "Yes, we're losing, we're withdrawing our membership, because they're not offering what we need." So there's lack of communication or disconnect, if you will, between the businessmen, the chamber, as well as the city council.
Do you think it might be time to raise taxes in the city?
I do not support progressive taxation. I would rather reach out to our state legislators and see if we can repeal the bill that was passed that got rid of the opportunity to have a state tax. We really need a state tax, state income tax, because that's progressive taxation, and it's based on your ability to pay. I do not support progressive taxation.
I've got a question that kind of carcans back to what you just mentioned a minute ago, describing your, what you would do with the chamber, how you would use your position to get ideas on the table. One of the big things with an office like this is sort of leadership and governance, that yes, you're elected to an office, a council office, but you have a bigger platform, and you can decide to use your voice for good in the community. How would you use your voice if elected? What kind of influence would you foster? What would you...
That's a great question, because I've already been doing it, even though I'm not the city councilwoman. I've used my spotlight, if you will, to shine on Idaho community. I've used my spotlight, if you will, to shine on the foster care program. I was, have been involved with the foster care programs for the past, I guess, 15 years, and so in various capacities. I spent one year on the foster care review board. I'm now on the foster care council. I'm involved with this government. I've been a foster parent as well. And so I've been using my platform, if you will, to shine a light. We need more foster parents. These kids are not throwaway kids. People think that, you know, that they're broken, and they're not. And so I've been using my platform, if you will, or my light, to shine on various communities. Another community that's close to my heart is the deaf community in the heart of here. Because of the school that I teach at White Station High School, we're a magnet for the deaf community. Their kids are coming throughout the tri-state area to our school.
I didn't know that. So all three states?
Yes. And so we have a huge program. Another spotlight I would like to shine, which I have not yet, that's autism. So I will, if you will, shine my light, or use my platform, or my opportunity as a city councilwoman, to help programs are doing great things. Like, for example, I visited several shelters, homeless shelters, and see what they're doing. There are a lot of, programs are already going on, so maybe they need to be bolstered. There's also a disconnect when I was out in the public, meeting with different communities, between the services that are out there and the people that need them. So there needs to be a bridge, if you will, between those two communities, so that people know what services are available and how to get to those services.
I have a last question, if there are no other questions. It might be a second or last question. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just have one. So the council is comprised of many people.
Correct.
You're one of many.
Thirteen.
What role do you see yourself playing in that dynamic? Are you an outspoken member that tries to push things through? Or are you a consensus builder? What role do you think you would play in that group to try and help get things accomplished?
I'm a consensus builder in the sense that we have to find common ground, because if we can't, then we can't get things done. I've been hearing from communities, as well as talking to incumbents, you know, about their positions and their issues. So I know their stance moving forward. I'm hearing from the communities, as well from certain city councilmen, that we need to have, for example, 13 single districts as opposed to super-districts. So I will be going in, basically getting ready on my job, because I'll be a super-district councilwoman. And so as far as the type of councilperson, I'm a consensus builder.
A lot of the issues that you've put your finger on have dawned on us for years. Do you think the city has shown progress since you were in Mayor Harrington's first administration? Or do you think that we're dealing with the same issues year after year, and there's very difficult, or did you have any progress with?
One thing that I want to say is that you hear politicians, when they run for office, they try to make it a black and white issue. It's way beyond that. It's a socioeconomic issue. We've become a city of the have and have-nots. It has not changed, because those people do not have stuff that I have in the past 20 years. So in that sense, they're stuck in poverty. So no, it's not changed. For those people who are stuck in poverty, no.
It's the same issues. There's not been great progress.
As far as, yes. If you look at studies, the data also reflects that. There was a study done by a University of Memphis professor, and yes, I looked at that. And it saddens me, you know, that if you're stuck in poverty, unless somebody comes and helps you, or provides you with services that can get you out of poverty, it's going to be generational. it's going to be generational and continue to be generational.
Thank you. This is the last question. And as I mentioned earlier, it involves a question about you and your district and city. What have you learned about yourself and your super district as well as the city during this run?
What I've learned by myself is I'm very passionate. I connect very well with people. Yesterday, when I was at my job at White Station, I was talking to the janitors and they were dancing. And I was like, "What's going on?" They were like, "You're giving us hope." And I was like, "Me? Really?" And they were like, "Yes." And I'm hearing that over and over again. And so if I'm ready for office, whether I win or lose, if I'm giving people hope, then it's all that worth it. And I didn't realize I was doing that. People keep telling me that, so it must be true.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your time and I know it was, you're the-